Cool. And it's being recorded, so watch your Ps and Qs. The roll call of Planning Commission members present, please. Any of you can start. Give yourself a little attention.
Ray, sir, look here.
Boyle, here.
Erin Palin, here.
Heather Lind, here.
Lubbe Boba, the issue.
Is that, do we have everybody?
Everyone except Abby.
Yep. Real quick, before we move on on the agenda, I think that it doesn't sound like at the last little the DOLA update meeting that everybody was introduced to each other. I guess we sort of just did that, but welcome aboard new planning commission members. Excited to have a full slate of you again, so that's fun. And I think that tonight's agenda is going to be super fun for us to discuss and talk about what lies ahead for us in the next year or so. So, welcome. Do we have any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Roll call the county commissioners.
Are they here? I didn't see any, sorry.
Well, one of them is.
Please, here.
Hi, Kayla.
Joining us.
Hi.
Okay, there's that roll call. We don't have these minutes, right, Paul? We don't have these?
You know, it's, I've just now located with the help of a Pete. I've been able to locate the recordings of those two meetings. Plus, there is another one that's not on here, which is 7/13, July 13th. And then I think there's also one for March 9th. So I plan to have those to all of you by the end of this week.
Okay, cool. That moves us on to Kristi. If you'd like to give us the housing manager update, please.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for letting me give my update today. I know everybody's super busy, so I will try to make it brief. But since there are some new people, I will also try to explain stuff. I tend to use some acronyms, so if there's any acronyms I missed, please feel free to interrupt me and I'll explain that a little more. So the Housing Coalition last had a meeting last Wednesday on the 19th. They are going to start recruiting for board members starting next month. Their next meeting is scheduled for September 16th. They did a coalition assessment back in February. And one of the things that came up in there is that there's not a very good media, social media presence. A lot of the community doesn't know what the Housing Coalition is, doesn't know what they do. And so they want to work on improving that. One of the posts that they are considering doing in September that they wanted to run past you all is to talk about the new makeup of the planning, the county planning commission. So since you guys have some new members and maybe we could even talk about what planning commission does. What do you guys think about that? We didn't just want to do it without getting your thoughts on it.
Well, I think any planning commissioners object?
Boyle, here. I don't object. That's a great idea.
Heather might be muted. Totally muted, sorry. Um, yeah, no, I think that sounds like a great idea, too. So just for clarification, what would, what do you think that would look like for on our end?
Well, I think, I think it's pretty vague right now. I'm kind of open to taking direction from, from you guys. I thought that I might try to get a picture of each of you. One that you sent to me, or I can send Ned to take a picture of you. And then I would probably say something like meet, meet the, I don't want to say new, because you know Heather and Howard have been there for a really long time. But meet the current planning commission with some new members or something like that. And then maybe just give like a brief, in the description, just give a brief like summary of what it is the planning commission does, who each of you are, and those types of things.
Yeah, no, that's, I didn't know if you wanted to like be a part of that or something.
No. Not really. So if that sounds, sounds good to you guys, I'll be reaching out for some pictures. Probably next week.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. And then talking about the subcommittee, so the Housing Coalition a while ago had an action plan done by some consultants that kind of laid out a roadmap for what the Housing Coalition should focus on in the future to get some stuff done. And two of those things that they are working on right now is a draft deed restriction recommendation that would be brought to the planning commission and board of county commissioners that you guys could use as a tool. They're going to meet again on September 2nd. And they're hoping to bring that draft deed restriction to you guys by the end of October. Kind of an ambitious date, but I'm hoping that we can, we can still do that. We've got a lot of advice from surrounding counties on, on what has been pitfalls for them in the past and what has worked really good. So we're kind of just basing, basing anything off of those recommendations. And then the other subcommittee of the Housing Coalition is the Climax Parcel Committee. So Climax owns nine acres of land that they are considering donating to the city for an affordable housing development. They got that property appraised in July. And we're just waiting to hear back from them before anything else is done. We won't have a meeting until we hear something from them, but they're really busy just with everything that's going on. So we're just being patient and doing any kind of prep work that we could possibly do. The policy advisory team is a group of community members who are learning about changes to building and land use codes that could help support affordable housing. Anne is on that group and Heather is on that group. There's also a city planning and zoning representative, a real estate agent, a builder, and three community members who make less than 120% area median income and do not own a home. So they're learning about all that stuff and they're going to meet again this Thursday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. You all are always welcome to those meetings. This session, they're going to be learning about how to advocate to you guys. Mainly just how public meetings work, making your voice heard, different forms of, of advocating. So I'm really excited about that meeting. And then the next thing that's going on is the Chapey Housing Trust is an organization, obviously in Chapey County, but they also service, they have it in their bylaws that they can service Lake County as well. They are looking for a board member that represents Lake County. So we reached out to the county commissioners to see if they had anybody in mind who might be a good fit for that. And then their, the Chapey Housing Trust is also working on financial literacy and mortgage readiness courses that would be offered here in Lake County. Last time I gave this update, I said that Full Circle might participate in that. And we've got a little bit more clarity on how they will participate. They are creating a family resource center that has all kinds of information about what's available and what's helpful in Lake County. And they would probably stream people to these courses based on, on their screening process. This is the last update. Sorry, I said I'd keep it brief, but I get talking about housing and then I just can't stop. The Leadville Housing Authority has been acting in Lake County, serving the elderly and disabled community since the mid 80s. They run the Mount Massive Manor. It's across from the elementary school. They decided a while ago that they wanted to expand their scope and help in general with affordable housing, which was amazing. Since then, two board members has resigned, which means they only have one board member, which kind of makes their board a little inefficient. And so the city legal department is looking into what could be done to help appoint new members. We're hoping that city council could do it. But there's a couple of other pathways if that turns out to not be true. Two letters of interest were submitted back in February and those people have not been appointed. So we're just trying to work our way through that. And then, you know, they would really be a partner in helping with any kind of like LITEC development. LITEC stands for low income housing tax credit that might come down the road, any deed restriction enforcement, a lot of it, they're kind of like the central hub for a lot of the stuff. A lot of the tools that we are pursuing. Okay, sorry, that was a lot. Any questions?
I have.
Yeah, let's hear.
This draft deed, deed language. I thought we were talking about several different languages depending on the particular situation. Is that no longer the case and we're going to zero it down to one?
So the Housing Action Plan recommended that we only have one because it could be complicated to enforce without a really strong housing authority. So I do believe what we're planning on bringing to you is one, one covenant and one community guidelines. There are two different documents that go together. And, you know, obviously what we're bringing is just a recommendation. So we're happy to support however that might.
Are you looking for a regulatory addition to anything concerning the covenant and the draft language? From the planning commission, from either, actually the, the board or the city council or both?
Paul, I'm not quite sure I understand what you're asking.
Well, is this going to be language, the covenant and the draft? Is this going to sit in the Housing Coalition or is it going to be regulatory? Meaning that it's going to get adopted into the land use code or the municipal code or both?
It looks like Anne might have an answer.
So Paul, what I think that, that what we're doing is just trying to create a pretty generic boilerplate. We're not going to probably get off in the weeds very much. That's a very good question that I don't think that we've completely vetted yet. But I do think that we want it to be as user friendly as possible. And we haven't even really landed on who would be, have the jurisdiction over if it would be the housing authority or where that's going to lie yet. So we're still in, 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 you know, like Chrissy had said, it's ambitious for the end of October. But we haven't completely landed on the structure of that. If we simply want something, potentially, maybe there should, should, we will be looking for some kind of code amendment to include it in both codes. But right now, we're, you know, we're just kind of looking at the models that exist out there and then trying to come up with something that's very basic. We, these can get incredibly onerous and, and, and pretty heavy lift. And I think the desire is to keep it very simplistic in, in its development at this point until there is a more of a hierarchy of how exactly the jurisdiction over this is going to, where it's going to land. So those are, those are still, it's still in development.
Okay, so.
I'd love to continue to have those kind of discussions so that that helps kind of drive it.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be codified, though. I mean, it could just, the language just could be adopted by resolution by both city council and, and the board of county commissioners.
Absolutely, to support it. So I'm kind of tending, again, this is stuff that hasn't been really worked out. I'm leaning towards that direction versus codifying it. But, but, but I'm just one person of, of a group. So we'll, we'll continue to maybe talk through the advantages of that and maybe invite you to one of those discussions as I think we get a little closer.
Yeah, and I kind of think of this as like, it's another tool that you guys can use, right? It's another tool that the community can use to help, help in the pursuit of affordable housing, right? So I like to think of the Housing Coalition as capacity for both you and the Board of County Commissioners, City Council, P&amp;Z. Something that might be useful for you, we can go through a lot of the legwork and then bring it to you, get some feedback, work on it some more. So that's in general, I'm kind of saying this for the newer people because I know the older people are aware that that's kind of the strategy. That's, that's kind of what I am here to help you guys with. Capacity on things that you want done and because you have a bajillion other things on your plate, just can't get to.
Christie, if you would allow me to kind of maybe just make it, you know, add a little layer of how it's going to apply to the planning commission is on the Leadville Town Homes is the, is in the subdivision process. And part of their sketch approval is that they're going to bring five deed restricted units onboard. And the deed restriction is based on, we believe, that, you know, that developer has agreed already to align five units. And the deed restriction goal basically is to figure out what the criteria is. And I think largely it's income based and live and work in Lake County. Maybe also, you know, work in, in surrounding areas. And then the whole tool is to keep those units available to that demographic in perpetuity. So we will, the planning commission will see a developer bringing this online through the Leadville Town Homes if, as that continues through the subdivision process. So specifically, we do have one development that has agreed to a condition of bringing five of their total number into that model and scenario. So that's kind of where the deed restriction at this point is going to kind of be helpful if there is a boilerplate. And we've had an opportunity to, to look at that and make sure it kind of fits the needs based on what the housing consultants and, and coalition and deed restriction group have indicated are, are goals and using that as an effective tool.
Thanks, Anne. That's all I got. Anybody got any more questions?
Hi, everybody. It's Sarah. I don't necessarily, this question was specific for you, Christie, but you just reminded me with the Housing Authority, chatting about the Housing Authority. We've been having, we recently had a conversation, we've been trying to look at strategies to prevent a potential wave of evictions. And Judge Seamus joined the conversation. And I think it's, you know, I spoke with him earlier this morning about kind of getting like Department of Housing and getting the programming, all the resources available together. And then having, you know, he would really love to create like a spot for a centralized, sorry, location of resources for folks. And he would love to promote, you know, an incentive created by the county perhaps to landlords. How that looks, we're not 100% sure yet, but maybe we could create something in any kind of abatement to taxes or whatnot with an agreement that gives us the community a more secure kind of agreement to what's the word I'm looking for? I guess slow. A potential wave or, or the risk of evictions that we may or may not see. I mean, it's a longstanding problem, but COVID has kind of exacerbated that. Or at least with unemployment, we're anticipating something like that happening. All of that to say, hi, everybody. I'm, I'm wondering, and not necessarily now, but I'm trying to remember how other counties or districts, housing authorities are set up. And because that was definitely on the list of kind of, you know, where we should or could have resources. And we know that that's, you know, here, it's not quite been set up or functioning in kind of a more comprehensive service to the community. So I am curious about, I guess, staffing and structure of housing authorities surrounding us.
Yes, that's a great question, Sarah. So Summit County Combined Housing Authority is kind of the model, right? They are a powerhouse. They manage multiple different versions of deed restriction based on what the community needs. So they have full-on deed restriction, they have deed restriction light. Deed restriction light means you just need to work and live here. It doesn't have anything to do with the price. They also do mortgage readiness, financial literacy, programming. They are the one-stop shop for all of those things. I think it would be amazing if we moved even like a quarter of the way in that direction, right? That I think that the Housing Authority has said that they're interested. They don't know how to get there. But I am working on getting an Americor Vista hopefully by November to help them navigate that waters and beef up a little bit. The problem comes with administrative, who, who's gonna, how are they gonna pay somebody, right? And so you kind of hit it, you kind of hit it on the head that I think at some point or another, we're going to be looking for some kind of funding mechanism to staff that housing authority to make it what, what the community needs it to be.
Christie, has there been conversations with the Summit Housing Authority yet on any kind of partnership to?
Yeah, I think that they are more than interested in, in helping in a guidance, like a mentor type thing, which is awesome. I keep talking to them about a fiscal assistance, right? Because their housing needs assessment clearly outlined that their workforce depends heavily on bedroom communities, including Lake County. They actually were able to get more information in their housing needs assessment than we were. They found, they highlighted that Lake County at this moment needs 866 more units than we have right now of housing to meet the, the need economically to have, you know, all of our businesses in Lake County fully, fully. So that was really interesting. I have, I think that it's hard for them to, to approach their electeds and say, hey, we want to send some money out of county because taxpayers want their money to stay there. But I'm hoping maybe there might be some like way to creatively get around that. Such as like they train, if, if we do get some staff, they train our staff and back up our staff when our staff needs to take vacation or time off and things like that. I don't know. Just trying to keep that, that conversation flowing as much as we can. And I welcome any feedback on that, or if anybody wants to be involved in that conversation, I would love that.
Thanks, Christie. I just want to chime in. I think this is all super awesome discussion, but the Housing Coalition kind of, I don't want the planning commission starting to work on this project. And it's the housing, so this seems like a Housing Coalition conversation more so than us unless there was something on the land use side of that, Sarah, that you wanted us to be focusing on.
Um, no, I think it's just if there was interest or if it was appropriate to, and maybe it might just happen, but not necessarily prioritized or have as a big priority for the planning commission. But how to figure out some of those incentives. I mean, we're talking about eviction, our evictions and the housing authority. But I think those, it's the, it's the same idea or structure as to some of the other development incentives that we've kind of talked about and not really had to utilize. So I, I just think it will eventually weave in as, you know, we all kind of look at applications and, and land use proposals.
Yeah, for sure. And if, and I think that that's where, as you come to that kind of stuff, Christie, in keeping the housing, you know, in this housing manager update, we just keep that going. And once it's time for the planning commission to kick in and really be focused on assisting with some of that tasking, I think that's great. For sure, for us to be on the cusp of.
Well, thank you guys for so much of the time. Sorry.
Any other questions for Christie? Okay, cool. Thank you, Christie.
Bye, everybody. Take care.
Thanks, you too. Okay. Figure out how to change my screen sharing. Does that work? Everybody see that? Okay. Um, okay, so this is, Anne and I sat down and used some notes that Sarah gave us and then some notes that we already had from the past on trying to kind of outline what our list is. There's been some projects that the planning commission has been working on for a long time. And in, as applications come in, you lose focus on those projects and you don't have time for them. And sometimes they get lost, so we're just trying to rein them back in a little bit. So one of the first one, and everybody can see this screen, okay? They're not seeing the agenda anymore, right?
Can you make it full screen or enlarge it? Because we see the, the document is not the full, yeah, that's better.
Okay.
Little bit.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so the Backcountry Zone District is one that the planning commission's been working on for a really long time. And I'll give you just a little bit of background about what the idea behind this is. And if, and if anybody who's new has any, well, anybody has any questions along the way, let me know. But essentially, years ago, the county kind of put in place regulations to eliminate camping on your land. Because in places like Panar or in subdivisions, people were just buying vacant land and then camping. And unfortunately, most of the time, it wasn't these really beautiful $50,000 campers. They were, you know, $500 campers with tarps and tires and really fun stuff. So there were lots of complaints and trash being left and, you know, people just going to the bathroom all over the place. So you know, but the, the planning commission over the last several years identified that, you know, but at the end of the day, we're still kind of a recreational county. And there are plenty of properties where camping maybe does make sense. And, and, or looser restrictions, more of your hunting cabin or even possibly yurts or things like that. And so we identified the need for maybe more of a Backcountry Zone District. On the other piece of that, we were also thinking we'd like to keep that back country area back country. You know, we don't want somebody who happens to have $5 million come in and pave, you know, County Road 60 or something because they have the money to do it. So, so the idea was, how about we come up with a Backcountry Zone District? That would either be a zone district or an overlay. And it would And it would identify a lot of the areas where you know of people who have maybe mining claims like around Turquoise Lake, like up Cal Gulch, but out of the mining district, more south up above Beaver Lakes Estates, some of those, those places, Granite has some areas up in there that we identified as likely not the need for any kind of residential development, development, any kind of high density or even medium density. And that these areas would be allowed for people to have more of the off-the-grid kind of properties. So we got really close with this Backcountry Zone District. And I know Anne's going to start pulling some of the information that we did have together so that we can go through that when, when we can add this to the agenda, which it sounds like we can do pretty soon. I think that it would be great if we could wrap this thing up and, and seal it off. So I'm excited to be as close as we are, sit down with you guys, get some tweaks. I know that there was some dispute as to how it could be a zone district or an overlay and what that process looks like for the county and the county commissioners. So we are still, I think, working out those little details, but like I said, we're close, at least closer than we've ever been. So we'd like to, to add that as kind of priority one on our, our projects and goals list for this upcoming year. Anybody have any questions on the Backcountries and District? Or anything additional you want to add?
If you, if you put me on upper right-hand corner and say speaker view, you'll be able to see a copy of the zone district map that we have landed on as far as where these zone districts are actually going to be. So
that
I've, I've made a digitized version of that if it hasn't changed significantly in the last
It hasn't changed at all.
Okay, I can share that. If you want to get a good idea.
That would be more, that would be more better.
Okay. Let me see. I'm not very good at Zoom, so let me see if I can figure out how to.
You will be.
Yeah, I bet. You gotta have to be.
I had a quick question. When you were mentioning hunting cabins, yurts, camping, does that include tiny homes? How is that? Oh, my internet.
Yeah, you're breaking up a little bit, but I think I heard, does it include tiny homes? You know, I think the county in general has been talking a little bit about tiny homes. I think the problem with tiny homes, for the most part, is that they're mobile. If they remain mobile, then they're considered a temporary structure. We haven't really landed too much on that because most of these areas aren't necessarily super conducive to bringing up a trailer like that up to them. But I suppose maybe they, I don't know, we'd have, we, we could add that to the, to the discussion.
That makes sense. I think my brain jumps because we started about trailers in these labs that people had.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and when Bryce
Sorry, I don't know why my internet.
Okay. When Bryce shares the map, it'll help a little bit with that. As to tiny homes outside of the Backcountry District, I think we landed on that as long as they meet code and somebody puts them on a foundation. Our minimum, what is our minimum square footage right now? Did we change that? For the tiny
It's still 600.
The county's minimum square footage is 600. And we've kind of discussed that in the Backcountry Zone District, that some of those restrictions won't apply. But we're going to have to go through all of that as to what we're allowed to get around on building code and obviously keeping things so that you don't have a ban, you know, there's a few mining claims I know of on Turquoise Lake that have abandoned mobile homes on them right now, and nobody can get them out. So we also want to prevent that. So it'll be, we'll have to think of some balances in there, but obviously also trying to make it so that they're Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll just offer too, while Bryce is working on getting that map up, is staff did a pretty extensive research and we've got some good data on all of the property owners in this area. Of course, we're in all of the identified areas that are on the, on the map. We'll have to update that a little bit, but we have, that was a tremendous lift to get that information together. And now maybe with Bryce's help, it's going to be a little easier this time. But we are prepped and ready to start notifying property owners, which will be part of the process as well. So once we still have standards to figure out in the actual code language, but we have, we've done a lot of groundwork.
So it's not allowing me to share as soon as
Oh, maybe because I'm sharing? Let me stop. I'll stop share.
Oh, let me see if I can get this.
To add a couple of finer points to that, I think we decided it has to be a separate zone district because Erin Smith, our Land Use Council, had identified something in statute that didn't allow it to be an overlay. I can't exactly recall what that is. But I think that, and I'll try and find that out.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll take us a little bit of time for staff to get back up on speed on this, but we'll, we'll gather that information. Also, on the builds themselves, we had talked about some basic building code requirements of them and like maxing out instead of having a minimum square footage in the back country, having a maximum. Trying to kind of avoid that mini mansion in the back country and overdeveloping the back country more of a conservation-minded development.
Yep. Green areas on here are basically where we've identified appropriate use of a Backcountry Zone District.
Bryce, are you able to enlarge that for us?
Absolutely. So so yeah, there's the main areas which are down by Twin Lakes, Granite. This is, this is really taking off, you know, a lot of building going on back in this area. Turquoise Lake and up here on Mount Zion. Zoom anywhere. And just for you guys that aren't familiar with our map, the orange are the individual parcels. So private property, I can put on another layer to show you kind of where this and how this corresponds with the industrial mining area. So that yellow is our industrial mining zoned area.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Bryce.
Amazing.
Bryce, would you be able to email that to all of us?
Absolutely. I'll just email you, you can, I'll just email you this link. Map I have with kind of projects, things we've been talking about, but aren't finalized.
That's great.
That's great.
And we receive, staff receives calls and inquiries on this very topic. I mean, this is just such a high demand of use of, of land in Lake County. So I think our desire is, and and the other thing that we have found is that otherwise they do just happen to. So it's better to have the opportunity available so it gets done right and we get good oversight on it because Paul is our amazing champion of non-compliant structures and he does an amazing job, but it's a tiresome job for sure. And so it just, we really want to kind of embrace it and that it's getting done in a safe manner too.
We also want to make it easier for Anne when I'm done.
Which is never gonna happen.
Well, thank you. This map is super helpful, Bryce. Thank you.
Be sure to email the link to everyone after we're done here.
Nice, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments on Backcountry?
I just had a quick question. Sorry about that. So how's the areas decided? Did you all do surveys? Did you all analyze the areas? Was that areas like somewhat impacted by people camping out there? Were there any risks in assess in, in these areas and when deciding how to have the Backcountry Zone District?
That's a really good question, Oopie.
It is.
You want to take it, Heather?
Yeah, you know, historically, these areas are most of them are sitting already right outside of a subdivision. So you have that big section that's just to the south of the mining industrial. That area, yep, that area there is kind of borders Beaver Lakes Estates down below it. And then beyond it is all kind of four-wheel drive. Really what we look at is the more remote access. So a lot of these properties in almost all of these areas are summer access only unless you want to snowmobile yourself in and out. They're not on county maintained roads. That's a big piece. And we're going to make it clear that the county is not going to start maintaining them either. So it's these, these were areas that were already identified to have private property parcels within it and are off of those back country type roads. And not slated for ideal future development. Just either due to topography or infrastructure or what have you. And so these are kind of the areas where we're seeing a lot of people who own these little mining claims, little six-acre mining claims. And they just want to be able to camp on it because it's kind of out in the middle of nowhere. A lot of them are surrounded by a lot of national forest or BLM land. And so they, they were ideal for that. So these locations are just ones that through our own knowledge and research of the area were determined to be the most used or ideal locations for that.
Can I add to that, please? Okay, I'm not sure if you guys can even hear me. I've been coming out regularly, about every minute it kicks me out. Then it starts back up on its own. In addition, it was the use of these particular areas that also helped us determine what they were going to be. They were, they were mining claims that were not heavily used for mining as opposed to the industrial area that was heavily mined. And as time went on, these
Oops, looks like you went away, Howard. But I can finish Howard's thought that most of these are mining claims that were not mined. Many, there are some like up north of Turquoise Lake there. Some of the, some of those were actually mined, but they are also under some pressure to have cabins on them. And our cabins, I think that we're looking at are only occupiable less than, less than half the year. So when we, when someone wants to build one of the, these back country cabins, they'll be less than 600 feet. They probably won't have a source of water. They won't go up there and drill a well. I think they'll have to apply for some sort of different kind of waste disposal through the Board of Health.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you just for a second because that's not entirely true. A bunch of them, especially up in Cal Gulcheria, have wells. So there's a bunch that do have access for, for water. And just depending on their scenario, and I don't know that they will all be under 600 feet. I think we will have a maximum square footage, but I'm not sure we, I don't think it's that low.
That's what it's, that's what it's currently set at as a proposed number. And, and that was, I think we arrived at that because if they want to build a mini mansion, they, they still can be able to do that if they want, but they'll have to have water and sewer.
Oh, I see. Yeah, but then in those districts, I think we are going to have a max square footage period. Also.
Oh, I, okay. We'll have, we'll have to start discussing it again because I didn't really realize that. So, so if somebody wants to build their mini mansion, they can, it can only be so big.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's kind of, and I think it'll be helpful. Anne and I will put together the, what we had come up with for potential regs and we'll get that out to people as well. And I think that based on my conversation with Anne the other day, it seems like we have a fairly empty schedule here right now. So it seems like we could potentially start this work session at our next meeting. Any other questions?
Yeah, just to be clear, are you saying that you can opt into more of the ag forestry zoning rules? If you still keep it under that square footage threshold?
Not following your question. You're saying like you can build a mini mansion, but you're going to have to build the, you know, proper onsite sewage and well and everything like that.
Well, and I think that that's where Paul and I are, are on slightly different pages. I think that what, what, where there's two, there's two things going on. So watering, well and septic, there's only so much we can do as far as allowing somebody to not have a septic system on their lot. And so when they are only using the property for X number of days a year, which I, we have got to get with public health on what that can look like. And it's, and we do something like you're under 600 square feet, a certain square footage, then we can, we can give you a variance to having to put in a septic system. But there are other properties that can do wells and septics. And I, if I, just off the top of my head, I want to say that we discussed the back country max square footage period for those areas of being like 12 or 1500 square feet. And that was because of the idea, kind of what I alluded to earlier. Who has $5 million and was like, yeah, but these are the best views in town and I want to build my 6,000 square foot mansion up here and I'm going to pave the road to get to it and, you know, what have you. And then having a bunch of those littering the mountainside was kind of what we were trying to get away from. The back country was back country and it was a less intensive use of the land.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Paul. Like if it's going to be a mini mansion, year-round occupancy, you'd have to do those things.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if it's going to be a back country cabin, it's not year-round occupancy. We beat that one up, do you think, Heather?
I think so, unless anybody has any other questions. Cool. Thank you for sharing that, Bryce. Okay, everybody see that? Okay. Um, okay, so next thing that we're talking about is kind of the comprehensive plan review. We actually, as the county, I mean, it seems like yesterday that we just went through that giant process, but I think it was a few years ago now, five years ago. Five years ago, we did the comp plan. And we did that in, with a consulting firm and with the city. And so they're very similar plans with the city. The comp plan, if I, I know that Erin said she's read it already, which is awesome. But the comp plan has a lot of our, you know, our future goals and plans for the community. And I think that as Leadville's kind of exploded over the last two or three years, I mean, it was already moving up to that, but really has exploded the last two or three years. There's maybe a lot more that we could be looking at to further define what that looks like. I think that there, based on a few of our recent subdivision application hearings and things like that, I think that there are a lot of really concerned people that, hey, we're going to suddenly get overdeveloped and taken over and how do we make sure that locals can live here? How do we make sure that there's not going to be mansions littering our mountain sides? How can, you know, all of the things, right? And so I think our comp plan, for the most part, touches on all of those things, but maybe doesn't go into some good detail. I thought it might be, there, one example, for instance, we had a subdivision application not too long ago out in Twin Lakes and the, the development met the current requirements for minimum lot size for that zone district. That being said, it now would change the way you drive into town and see a bunch of houses here. And, you know, a lot of people don't like that. They didn't want that. And they felt like, you know, that area is pretty quiet and sparse with development and why are we allowing And they felt like, you know, that area is pretty quiet and sparse with development and why are we allowing this new development? Well, our hands were kind of tied because that's the way the code reads. And if the developer meets code requirements, we can't turn him away and make him have bigger lot sizes or decrease that density. So talking a lot about density made me realize that we maybe need to look at those different zone districts, make sure that first of all, they're appropriate with where we've got them. And then in addition to that, making sure that their density requirements are what we want them to look like. What do we think the community wants to see those, those densities look like? Where do they think future development does belong? Where is infrastructure going to allow us to do that? So that we can grow, but that we can do it smart. I think that one big thing that I've seen over the last 25 years with Summit County is there wasn't a lot of really smart planning. So they ended up with houses up the mountainside and not a lot of open space and not a lot of parks for, for the developments, things like that, that I think we could do better. I think we're maybe in the middle of it. And so we probably need to get on it pretty quickly as far as what we want, want to, to change or alter so that we can, you know, protect Leadville to be Leadville. So density is one thing, but realizing that there are lots of other things, right? There are things like planning where, where and how we can deal with water, potential fire concern, trails is a big one. You know, one example of the trail situation is the east side right now is all, most of you all know, it's zoned mining industrial. The reason it's zoned mining industrial is because that's where the majority of the mining took place back in the day. And there are tons of shafts up there. Pretty high contamination in the soils, things like that. So in most opinions, it's not really suitable for future development. That being said, if you've been here for a while and you do anything with trails, you probably know that there are some trails littered all over the east side. Some are legal, most are not. And the idea, for instance, with the Cloud City Wheelers and other trail advocacy groups in town, there, there's an idea that if we can get potential easements, surface right easements or trail easements through those private properties, you could essentially create that to be community open space. So those landowners can maybe get, and this is something that hasn't been worked through, but it's an idea that you could potentially get some sort of abatement of tax, property taxes, even though they're fairly minor. People can still hold on to their mining claims and hold on to their mineral rights should mining ever come back. But that in the meantime, we can have well-thought-out trail systems, safe trail systems that are through the east side that could be marketed for Leadville. So there's different things like that in identifying where trail corridors could be. You know, identifying access from different subdivisions to town, to subdivision. So there's a lot of pieces to this. And I think the comprehensive plan review can be. I'm not proposing we redo the comp plan by any means. I think that it would be nice, though, if we planned on, once we finished backcountry, we took the comp plan and we started with section one and we all just kind of went through and said, yup, does that still apply? Do we need to specify anything further? Is there anything for us on the code side or land use side that we need to address? If not, let's move on to the next section. And just kind of look at it from that lens of wanting to grow Lake County in a smart way and, and making it not so hard on us when we have applications put in front of us that we know that maybe the community doesn't want, but our code allows it to happen. Because that's a really, that's probably the hardest part of this job, I think, is when you're, you're sitting in that seat and you've got to make a decision to approve something because it meets all the criteria and, and you know that maybe it's not a good fit for town. So something to, that's kind of where that discussion has come in. And I don't know if Anne has anything else she wants to add to that or anybody else has any questions or additions to that conversation?
I was just going to add that I think it's a great place, that the comp plan is a great place to look at driving what our community wants and needs and, and being smart in, in the growth or the development is. Just to give everybody an idea, you know, the demand on development, our department is, is busier than it was last year. And I thought that last year was a record year. The calls and inquiries that we are receiving are everything from individual custom homes to subdivision. I, sometimes I'm kind of stunned that I think there's a lot going on, being planned around us that we still don't even know about, that haven't, you know, they haven't prepared them fully to bring them to us. But there's others, major subdivisions being spoken of and, and we don't have details on them yet. So I think it'd be really great to have our advisory document really being our guiding light of what we want our community to look at and to look at all of these collaborations with, like Heather gave the example of the trails. And, you know, Sarah works on the water augmentation plan and the service area for water. And, you know, where is our critical infrastructure and where do we want to see densities? I think Heather absolutely nailed it. And I think that our best tool is our comp plan. I think that sometimes when Paul and I had a discussion earlier about, you know, being careful about putting things in the land development code, sometimes a finding can be easier, easier to achieve through the comp plan than the unintended consequences of changing a regulation and, and creating non-conforming uses. So just for an example, anyway, there's a lot to discuss and I think it's a great plan.
Sarah, you had your hand up?
My hand up? Yeah, no, I love this and I think just even a, kind of a, even a simpler benefit of going through it as an exercise and highlighting the successes that we've had since 2015. It's all, you know, we have so much to do and we all have limited capacity and it always feels like it's kind of on to the next. And it would be great to go and kind of take inventory of all the successes, kind of put status, you know, all the goals and what their status might be in there and add, you know, maybe even some more references so that, again, all resources, potential resources for anyone building or considering and us, you know, hazard mitigation plan, I think is referenced. But community welfare protection plan, master trails plan, you know, all these things are referenced so that folks just have, have a menu of resources to go to would be great. And yeah, you, to expand a little bit too on that potential I am overlay or incentive. You know, every year we have the Board of Commissioners sit as the County Board of Equalization through protests. And I, we'd really like to better prepare options for folks who may or may not relinquish their properties. The county, you know, gains a lot of mining claims. Not, Bryce could actually help speak to that. How, like, how, what, how trending that might be or what we might anticipate in the future. But, you know, we want, we want folks to hold ownership on those and pay taxes. And, you know, where can we find the sweet spot in the balance of keeping them in private ownership? But really figuring out some creative ways to, for that public use like Heather was talking about. So that, that would be fantastic to maybe talk through some of that. And it's not just in the industrial mining, but I think that's where, you know, a lot of kind of that rec overlay potential has been discussed in the past.
I, I think that Heather really knocked it out of the park with her statement that this is a different place than it was two, three years ago. Some of our planning commissioners, I think, may not be as attuned to that. But I've been here for six years and I'd have to say that Lake County is a very different place than it was when I first got here. I think it's really is time for us to take a close examination of the comprehensive plan because I think there's a lot of things in there that need to be tweaked.
Or re-supported with the, with the land development code. You know, I think that we may have put shiny rainbows and unicorns in the comp plan, but maybe didn't then make sure that our current, and maybe, maybe it does. Maybe our current code does support how the comp plan reads it because it's in a general fashion. But I think that there are some things, density especially, that maybe isn't necessarily as in line with at least my interpretation of the comp plan. And that's the other piece of the comp plan, can be a very interpretive document, you know, and maybe we can make it just a little bit less. So that's kind of the idea of that. That one, I understand, is a really big lift for us, but I think it'll be worthwhile and it'll feel gratifying to, to make little steps on as we go, just to see some changes happen to keep, you know, keep Leadville the reason we all want to live here. If there's no other questions on that, then I'll move along. The last one on here is the ideas of making development more affordable. Where that's coming from is a lot to do with the Housing Policy Advocacy Group and this housing in general. I think we all know that there's a housing crisis. There's a housing crisis all over the state. There's definitely a housing crisis in Leadville. Making it so that our community members can still live here. I really think that the future development is the key to that. If we don't have anybody willing to build us a new age West Park or a new age apartment complex or any of that soon and, and, you know, that that could be, we're already kind of behind the ball, right? So the Housing Coalition that Christie talked about earlier, the Housing Policy Advocacy Group, everybody's kind of working on all these different strategies of how to make it so that we can get affordable housing in our community. One big thing that has been a push for me personally, just because through my job as a real estate agent, working with developers is, there's been so many developers that have come and gone out of my office that cannot make the numbers work here. We deal a lot with things that are out of our control, such as subcontractors being able to drive 35 minutes away and get paid four times as much money as they would here. You know, that drives our costs up, materials, all of those things that are out of our control. The county doesn't, because we don't control water and sewer, we don't control infrastructure costs either. I would love to start leaning on that a little bit, but we can't, we don't, we don't control the infrastructure costs either. So those are big development costs for developers. But the, but part of what we do control is the process that the developer goes through with us and the cost of that process. And so if there's anything there that we can, as the county, offer as our bring to the table, hey, if you're willing to build affordable, we're willing to make this cheaper or quicker or what have you. I think that's a really big, a really big deal. And I think that that's something that the county could potentially be doing right away while we're waiting on some of these other things to happen. You know, if we, if we understood how we could do a better job with the process and the cost of that process for developers, I think that that would help us sitting at the table with these developers to be able to provide affordable housing. The biggest thing with that is that I think it takes really diving into kind of a pro forma or something similar like that with a builder and saying, okay, I'm a builder and tell me how to go through this process. And this is the house I, houses I want to build and how long is my process going to be? Because summer is my building season and I need to be able to have everything done this summer. You know, that's where I think that we can look at, what's our current turnaround time? What are the current requirements? What are the costs involved for me as a developer to go through that process? And really just sit down and say, where can we cut that without obviously cutting, you know, obviously staff work has to be cut if we're going to cut costs, things like that. Like I think it's a, it's another big chew to take off. But I think that it's, it's something that isn't being, doesn't seem to be being worked on with the Housing Coalition or the Policy Advocacy Group. They've kind of said that that's out of their realm to do. And so I think that that's why I put it on this list, because I think it's something that could help us incentivize more affordable workforce housing developments coming our way. Any questions or like comments on that?
Is it just affordable housing developments that have been having this cost issue? Or is it kind of developers across the board?
Definitely, I think developers across the board. The biggest, the thing that I see in my job is that the reason we don't have new home developments, you know, our most recent one was Brooklyn Heights, which was in the city. But they didn't even finish that development. And, and so I think that the reason that we're not seeing it is because it is really hard to make the numbers work. We're not like Denver where you can sell five, $600, $1,000 houses every day. And, and so when their numbers are coming in at that or close to it, it gets really tough for them to make, to make that work. So they're saying, well, I know I can't, if, if all I can do is build a house and it's going to cost, you know, in order for me to make my profit, it's going to cost $500,000 and I don't have the buyer market for that, I'm not, this doesn't make sense for me to build here. The, the majority of the buyer market is more down towards not maybe as low as what they're talking about AMIs for affordable housing, but it's closer to workforce attainability. That's kind of where the average price market is, right? Around that like $350,000, $400,000 range. And it's really hard to get any house off the ground at that price. So unless they can, they can see that and the risk is really low and they're like, oh yeah, perfect. I know that if I build this, I'll be able to sell it. Great, I'm going to do it. They're just not doing it. They're going to go somewhere else and stay where they can, you know? And unfortunately, we, we fall out of the running at that point. Hopefully that made sense.
No, it did. I'm sorry. I was just like, I was just curious if it was across the border, if it was just finding the developers who did see that, yes, to build affordable housing, you therefore have to sell it for less. And that was the only realm that was an issue.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of, it's kind of the, both are almost the same. You know, the market is close to that affordable number, so they want to build in there anyway. At least that's been my experience is most of them want to be building at that price point anyway, but they just can't seem to make it work. And so if we're able to say, okay, well, you guarantee us you're going to, you're going to do it affordably, we'll incentivize you by giving you X, Y, and Z, then I think that could be, that could help the situation, I think, for sure. Any other comments or questions on that? Okay. I know that, and Anne maybe wants to speak to the updates. Yeah, I'll just let Anne take the table for the staff updates.
Okay, sounds great. And just to backtrack just for a second, I think that when we get back to, and there'll be a lot of information that's going to come to us from the Housing Coalition and the different subcommittees and such. But eventually, maybe a little bit of a discussion around counting on parcels. Sometimes an incentive could also potentially be land. And just, that's going to take some, some work with legal and more research. But it may be another tool that we, we might have to add into the mix to try to incentivize. So just a thought about that, but that'll be something that'll probably come up in the future. So the things that I just threw on here that I wanted to, I'd spoken to Heather a little bit about, Paul and I have wanted to do this for some time, but we have to find some capacity and time to get it done. And that is a lot of consolidations. Right now, they require, even in platted subdivisions, they require a new plat to be created by a surveyor. And what we're doing typically is vacating a line between the two existing parcels or three or more to create one new all-inclusive parcel. This happens a lot in. This happens a lot in Panarc. And what we are proposing, we've looked at, I've spoken with Renee Parent from Blue River Land Surveying, she's no longer in business in Lake County, but she was well informed on the Summit County process. So there's a model code out there that already exists. And what we would be looking to do, it's already an administrative process, so we don't bring a lot of consolidations to the planning commission. However, they are costly and it kind of feeds into the idea of making building a little more affordable. It's an added expense to the property owner to, for the plating, generally $15,000 to $2,000 by the time you've gone through the, the process. And so we're, we're going to be bringing forth a code amendment after we've done a little more research and looked on, when you're looking to consolidate land in an existing platted subdivision, so there's already a plat that exists and you're only doing lot one and two and block three. We're going to eventually be proposing a new administrative method that alleviates the need for the creation of a new survey plat that vacates that lot line. I'm really interested in talking to Bryce about this now that we have a mapping department. It seems to also align that potentially we could vacate those lot lines by resolution, update our existing plats that we have by showing that, you know, as, as we're moving forward in this new amazing mapping capability. And so alleviating the cost to the property owner as well as the burden of time that it, that it takes for staff to do these. So they come in, we review them, we send them out for peer review to a second surveyor. The other, this brings up another issue that we have locally, and that is the limited amount of surveyors that we have. We don't have a lot of surveyors in the area. And so these reviews take us, to get it back, the peer review can take, it has taken up to 60 days, to be very honest. And so we've got a short building season, property owners are waiting to get their lot consolidations done. So there's cost and time, the time then equals cost to the, to the property owner. So we'd really like to really look, we're going to investigate the process. We know that it's utilized in other jurisdictions and see if there is a way to streamline this and only in platted subdivisions, not just raw land. In those instances, we need to create a plat. But if a plat exists, then an administrative process to vacate the lot line and allow them to create one all-inclusive lot. So we'll be doing further research on that and bringing that forward. We just wanted to make sure that everyone felt that that was a good use of our time. And, and we just wanted to identify that we think that it would decrease some of the cost. We also don't think that, I know that sometimes we are, we've had a discussion about requiring surveys as part of the building process to increase our, our mapping. But again, this would be in areas that those plats already exist, that plating already exists. So it's not that we're taking away from an opportunity. But I, again, I'd love to hear if everyone thinks that that would be a good use of, of staff time to look at trying to streamline that a little bit.
I think that's a great idea and it's going to save you guys so much time on the backend that it's going to be so worth it. And you know, like you said, it's a plat, their legal description already exists. I mean, it's, yeah, I think that'd be great. And really work on that lowering costs. I mean, talk about a regulatory change that would lower costs, like that's huge.
Surveyors right now over the summer have been four plus weeks out for any of our property sales. So like, I can't even imagine the piles on your, in, in delaying somebody in the middle of building process because they got to get a survey. Like it all just seems, if you're, if they're in platted subdivisions, it doesn't make sense to me to require a survey.
Especially in places like Panarc where they essentially have to consolidate lots at this point to be able to build.
Right, right.
Make it easier, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's great.
Paul and I are thrilled to hear that. So we'll move forward on that. And then the next thing I wanted to let you know, the only, like you said, we've got some great opportunity to work on the things that we talked about this evening in our regularly meeting, meeting times on the second and fourth Monday of the month. Because the only other thing that is in the wings for beyond the code amendment for lot consolidation is the county owns two gravel pits, one near the airport and one at Half Moon. We are working on potentially securing leases for individual contractors to come in and start mining operations in those areas, or we're, we're looking to see if that opportunity exists and if we're going to be able to fill that need. And in doing so, both of those pits will need conditional use permits. Additionally, we've decided, the group and with the help of Commissioner Mudge, to think that it would be a good use of staff's time to go ahead and get those pits ready and go through the conditional use permit so that when we bring them online with the selected contractor, the conditional use permit is already in place and they could potentially start operations in probably next season. But, so that's, that's the only thing that we have in the wings. We do, you know, we've done an extension for Little Town Homes who will be bringing us preliminary as their next step. Westwood is recorded, so they're done. And Gateway, haven't really heard from their development team, but they were granted another year extension. So we've got, and Angel View, we believe they're going to be ready for preliminary. They thought they were going to be ready about a month ago, but they've kind of backed off. They, they're working on C dot access right now and a couple other issues. And so we've got one major sub and two PUD probably headed our direction at the preliminary stage coming up, but we have no real tangible ETAs on any of those. And so I guess that leads me to the last thing, just meeting plans. I would love to like carve out our next agendas to maybe work on, you know, the three items with your direction on what you'd like to see first. And if you want to prioritize those or at least maybe just a starting place. If you want to start with backcountry or if you want to give staff, you know, a little bit different direction, we could start aligning the first meeting, gosh, in September, I can't believe it's September, to, to work on one of these items.
I think if it were up to me, I'd say since we're so close on backcountry, I'd love to just get it knocked out before we forget too much else that we were working on with that. I mean, I kind of like the list the way it is, but I'm also open to other discussion on that for sure.
I'm all in favor of getting the backcountry zone ready. I mean, I know it's been in the works for a long time, so it's kind of out there. People are know, know of it or aware of it. And so if we could just finalize something on it, you know, to clear up, I know there's a lot of building going on there already, so it'd help it, Ann and Paul just be able to answer questions even.
Heather, I
Yeah, we, we have worked on that backcountry for so long, Heather. And then we stop to get on to something else, then we start, then we stop. Let's get it done.
Yeah, I agree. I don't even want to count the years that we've worked on it because it's too many.
I think, Heather, that is that you get to set those priorities. I think you and Howard are our most experienced planning commissioners, so I think that you get to set those particular priorities. I don't disagree with what you want to do with it in that order. Backcountry zoning, comp plan, and then development affordability.
Very little, I know. I agree. I am pretty excited. I do think there is something to, if we have the time after backcountry, getting to the comprehensive plan because the county is going to develop unless, and we either get to direct it or, or it's going to happen before we know it. And too many other mountain communities, we've seen it happen already. So
Yeah.
I'm a big, I think it'd be exciting if we had the time. But backcountry, I'm excited to learn more. So yes, I back all of you up, sorry.
No, I think that's great. I think hopefully backcountry won't take us too, too long, especially if we're able to develop or I'm sorry, devote full meeting agendas to it. I think it may not be very many before we can finally get that guy knocked out. And then I anticipate, you know, fall and winter being fairly quiet anyway for us to then start comp plan review. But let's see if we can get backcountry zone figured out in a few meetings. Sweet.
You know, Paul, you guys going something along the proposed, like the, the language you have proposed for the
Yes, I was just about to indicate that you send, send me the map. I will send out the, the language that we have so far, that we landed on. But I think that it's important to understand, and county commissioners, I'm going to put you on the spot here, there's only three of us. And we have, and this is frankly a pretty big list that we're going to be looking at doing with just the three of us. I don't think we're going to be able to do it.
I hear you, Paul.
You're talking about this list of our priorities or the list for backcountry?
No, the list of our priorities.
Yeah, right. Well, we will see if we can make it as easy as possible. Do what we can. Well, perfect. Well, I'm excited to get started on those next month. Does, is, are there B O C C updates? Or was that on there for, sorry?
I just wanted to give the board an opportunity to, if they, you know, just wanted to, had anything they wanted to share, already additional direction for staff. I just wanted to take, to give it opportunity and, and honor the board members that were in our meeting to see if they, if they had anything else they'd like to share.
They're hiring six more land use staff members for you.
Again, I hear you loud and clear, Paul. I don't, I think, I think everybody did a fantastic job. Thank you so much. We covered a lot of information and I'm really excited about the new group that we have. I don't think I have anything specific other than a couple of little items that might be of interest to folks. We are going to have a pre-construction meeting if, since we're talking about water augmentation and kind of where we're focusing, might focus development and having this in mind. So putting in some measurement tools up at the Dairy Three, which is at the Mount Elbert Trailhead, South, South Elbert Trailhead. And so that work should be starting by September 15th. And the pipeline and telemetry and whatnot, Flume, Headgate will be, should be in and complete shortly after, maybe three weeks after. The work for every, just
Eric, could you tell us why that's so important?
Yeah, the installation of the measuring devices is decreed, is adjudicated in our water decree. We need to do that because it is a source of acre feet to include in our portfolio to allocate. And without, we're trying to keep it simple, we can allocate, allocate a lot of that water as irrigation, which would then free up some of the municipal consumptive use water that we have that is currently being allocated to the golf course, for instance, for irrigation. And then we can really start using that kind of quote unquote freed up water for municipal use and development. I've been speaking with Terry Skango with the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District, the district that manages Chiefy County and other boundaries to do, or to administrate our augmentation plan. And I will just say, you know, I'm happy to have a conversation and try to go into this deeper or at any length with anyone, anytime. But you might ask why Parkville wouldn't do that. And while they might be able to build and develop into that, Parkville, the way I kind of had an aha moment a while back was Parkville is in the business of delivering water and like the Conservancy District actually, you know, augments water and it's kind of, it's kind of its own beast. It's a different ballgame. So while it's not in competition with Parkville, it is very much, you know, Parkville, Parkville is very much a partner and a player in what this will look like and, and helping us to focus development where utilities and boundaries already exist. So that is why that's so important, if I didn't go on too much of a tangent there. And let's see, there's also a lot of talk, a lot of communities, there's a lot of funding, sorry, around wildfire protection planning right now, and a lot of communities are looking at theirs. You know, we were going to partner with Chafee on a bigger project of mapping and outreach and engagement, community engagement. But going back and reading through the CWPP, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, we have a lot of still relevant projects identified in that and actually a few that are pretty shovel ready. So while that might seem ancillary to the planning commission, I, I think I'd rely heavily on the planning commission to help be a sounding board and maybe participate in any education and outreach that we might be able to organize around some projects that would get identified as priorities that we could do with partners and perhaps implement through next year. You know, there's, you know, places from like Wild, Wild Turkey Federation, I mean, they have millions of dollars, all the, you know, Trout Unlimited and all these agencies have funds that are accessible and they have interest in, you know, protection of wildlife corridors and whatnot. And just combined with water infrastructure and stakeholders there, I mean, there's, there's just a ton of layers as to why we would really look at that. Never mind the fact that it's pretty intense and insane that we've seen nothing but smoke for the last, what, week and a half, which is pretty unusual. And it's definitely in, everybody's the forefront of everyone's minds to, to try to address fuel mitigation. So anyway, lots of, lots of little things going on. Happy to talk more with anybody. Thank you. Lots of big things going on.
Thanks. I think that's helpful to know where the water is, so that's great. All right. Any other questions or comments before we adjourn this thing? All right. Well, do I have a motion to adjourn? Who wants to make a motion?
I bet Howard's trying.
I will make a motion to return.
Thanks, Howard. Do I have a second?
Did you hear it?
I heard you.
Second.
Awesome. Was that you, Bryce? Okay, cool.
Yeah, second.
All right, all in favor? Bye.
Bye.
Thanks, guys, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
All right, see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
All along.